This meeting is being recorded.
Yeah. All right, let me get started. I'll do the intro and then I'll turn it over to Tim. Okay, so welcome everyone to the May 23rd, 2023 meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission. This is a web-based call, so we are operating under the following procedures. The session is being audio recorded and video recorded. We will not use a chat feature in this meeting. And to ensure sound quality, the default rule for this meeting is that everyone will remain on mute. Commissioners and staff will generally remain muted, except when speaking or voting. This meeting is open to the public, but is not a public hearing. Therefore, no members of the public may speak unless specifically invited to do so. If a member of the public creates an audio or video disruption, they may be manually ejected from the meeting upon recommendation of staff or the chair. We appreciate your attendance at this meeting. Should you have any questions about this process? You may call our staff at eight six zero four 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 five eight one three after the meeting has ended. And with that, I turn it over to Jim.
Okay, so I'm Tim Blythe, now sitting in for our Chair Greg, who couldn't be here tonight. And we're also missing Victor, so we'll go ahead and sit Bert and Doris as alternates tonight. Or as regular members. All right, so item number two, approval of our May 9th, 2023 meeting minutes. Did everybody have a chance to look at those?
Yes, and this is Bert. I'd make a motion to approve the minutes.
They moved by Bert. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Tim. All in favor?
Hi Karen.
Hi Doris.
Hi Bert.
Hi Tim.
And I for the other Sam, so that's everybody. Hey, item number three, are there any applications for receiving tonight?
We do not.
Okay, so we can move right on to item number four. So this is application number PL 23-9, request of Waterford Central LLC and 61A My Rock LLC owners. Sigcon Associates LLC applicant for the site plan approval to locate a multifamily development on property located at 61 and 61A My Rock Avenue. In accordance with sections 8.1.3, 16.1.2, and 22 of the zoning regulations, and as shown on the site plans titled, Waterford Central Site Development Plan stated March 16th, 2023, and revised as of May 2nd, 2023. So who is here leading for the applicants tonight?
That would be me. For the record, my name's Brandon Handfield with Yantick River Consultants LLC. A professional engineer licensed in the state of Connecticut, located in Lebanon, representing the applicant Sigcon Associates as well as the owners. Also on the meeting today is John Wicco, our project architect, and Joseph Balskus, our traffic engineer with VHB. There's a lot to unpack in this application and a lot in the plans, so I'll be as detailed and brief at the same time as I can. The development we're here for is obviously Waterford Central developer apartments, which is located at 61 My Rock Avenue. This development and the property itself is located immediately adjacent or to the east of Waterford Woods Apartments, which is currently under construction and was approved by the town in 2021 and 2022. This is a standalone property and a separate development, however, it is unified and somewhat of an expansion of Waterford Woods as we are connecting to their internal road network and utilities. But we are treating it as a separate application and a separate property. But you'll see a lot of common elements as they are unified and intended to be. What I'll do is I'll walk through briefly the existing site itself, familiarize yourself with what exists today. And then I'll go through the development and I will give a high-level presentation on grading drainage utilities and erosion controls, but we'll note that we comply with your local regulations as well as state regulations. And if any details necessary, please stop me and I can dive in at that time. So what I'll do, I'll share my screen. I just want to confirm everybody can see what the plans in front of you.
Yep.
All right, perfect. So, as I said before, 61 My Rock Avenue, the property itself, or at least the northerly sections outlined here in orange, for orientation purposes, to the left of this page is your title sheet would be Willets Avenue. Running, I guess, west to east, Boston Post Road would be all the way at the left side or north end and the intersection down here. To the west of our project would be the Waterford Woods. Development that is currently under construction or down to the top of your page or to the east is My Rock Avenue. And to the southeast of this property or the right corner, you'll see the existing Atlantic Broadpan or former Atlantic Broadband Building. That's the current commercial development on the property. And then further to the south, the railroad corridor would be off the screen. And mainly that area consists of wetlands and utilities. All right, so what I'll do first is give you, these are the survey maps that were submitted with the application. All I've done is highlighted the boundary in orange to give you an idea. So this is sheet one of the survey, again, to the left is Willets Avenue. And to the top is My Rock Avenue. So this is sheet one for scale purposes. The total project area is 27.62 acres, that includes both 61 and 61A My Rock Avenue. They will be merged as part of this project. And there is a minor lot line revision we are requesting as part of this application with 394 Willets Avenue. That's right here, and I do have a map to illustrate that at a later time. The main purpose of these two slides is to give you a general idea of topography and use. There's not any use going on in the north side of this property, it's vacant. Topography slopes from this northeast corner down in a southwesterly direction. Moderate slopes. Existing vegetation consists of mainly scrub brush invasive species, no mature vegetation whatsoever. And that's kind of indicative of the history of land use on this parcel. It's been disturbed over time and used for various purposes, we were told they parked for the fair. There's some landfilling activities that occur in the southwest, but in general, this entire area has been stripped at some point and disturbed. And nothing has regrown other than invasive. Moving to the south end of the site, so again, My Rock Avenue is above you. We get to where the Atlantic Broadband Building is, so at the southeast corner is this commercial development, consists of about 10,000 square feet of commercial space. Formerly used as utility offices associated with the television station. There's about 50 parking spaces with two access points to this private driveway. That private driveway connects up to My Rock Avenue just before the cul-de-sac. And that private driveway also serves Eversource, which is off the page or off the screen here to the southeast, and that's Eversource's office building. There's a large parking area as well as laid down for their materials. As you get further back here, this is 61A at 61A My Rock Avenue. It is generally landlocked, except for some frontage here on this private easement. It's mainly wet and there are some landfilling activities that occurred. One thing I'll point out on this map, it's not outlined, however, basically from the westerly edge of this parking area down to about this line and encompassing this area here up to the tree line. That is an area of historic landfilling on this property. We've done extensive test pits in that area, found mostly concrete, brick, masonry debris, some trace amounts of metal and wood. Generally, we'd call it construction and demolition debris and clean fill. But we are doing some further investigation on that area to classify it, or hopefully to classify as not a landfill, technically just clean fill. And I apologize, my PDF just locked up on me, so hopefully it releases here for a minute. While it does that, this is the existing tree line here. And I got the spinning wheel of death, but this here area here is everything to the south of this line is generally vegetated with some larger mature vegetation. Small wetland pocket here, which is basically the remnants of what they didn't fill as part of the landfilling. Looks like I released, so I'm gonna get off this page as quick as I can. Apologize for the delay. Like I said, it is a big PDF plan set. Well, why, while my screen is, any questions on the existing property while my screen resets itself here? It's about the only way I can fill the time other than talk about the development, so.
Tim, I'm scrolling through, I don't see anybody unmuting themselves, but feel free to if anybody has questions.
Okay.
Brandon, you want me to do the traffic study presentation? Why do you do that, or?
I can't share anything. So, there we go, all right. I don't know where I just went, but I'm so while we're here, I don't know what page it went to, but this is the lot line revision plan. Which shows both the 394 Willets Avenue parcel right here, which is Waterford Woods. In green and then in orange is the subject property at 61 My Rock Avenue. So 27.62 acres, 26.42 acres. And what you see in red here is the minor lot line revision that we are proposing. So we're taking this little wedge from 394 and adding it to 61 My Rock Avenue. And you see that new, new property line here aligns with the access driveway that was built. So we're basically providing a access driveway corridor that's fully on the 394 parcel. And the rest will be on 61 My Rock Avenue. There are unified zoning summary tables and unified parking tables that confirm both lots will still be in compliance with your zoning regulations after the lot line revision is finalized and filed. Okay, so I skipped, here we go. So moving into, this is sheet two of your overall development or your overall development plan. What I did is I took that plan, added color, and I put the Bing aerial underneath it. And the reason I use Bing is it's the most current aerial of the area. And it shows Waterford Woods partially constructed, so you'll see building A, building B, and building C at the bottom of your plan or to the west. It also shows the existing driveway that has been built to serve Waterford Woods with the single inbound lane and the double exit lane for right and left turns. So what you have, again, outlined in orange is our subject property. And we are proposing a multifamily development with six new multifamily buildings. Each one will be 36 units and three stories. And they will be spaced on the site. Also, other buildings constructed will be five garages, two of which have 10 bays and three have five bays. So right here would be a 10 bay garage, 10 bay garage. And then we have three five bay garages leaning down. Access to our site will be off of the main road serving Waterford Woods. So as you come onto our site from Willets Avenue, you will come to an intersection. On the left will be our main access drive serving 61 My Rock Avenue or Waterford Central. It will go in a clockwise rotation and then reconnect to the Waterford Woods development between buildings A and B. There will be a short spur serving buildings K and L. And then there will be a maintenance building out back. We do show one connection to the Atlantic Broadband Development. That connection is for emergency and maintenance purposes only. It is a single lane. And to ensure that there's no through traffic for residential purposes, we are adding a locked gate with a Knox box, so that the only people with access through that gate will be the fire department, police department, and the owner if they need to get through. But that will remain locked, so there is no through access for the new Waterford Central Development or the northwest corner of Atlantic Broadband to the private driveway easement or My Rock Avenue.
Where will, where will that gate be located? Excuse me, sorry. Please don't ask me.
Sure, I'll cover it now, so the gate is here, it's hard to see on this plan because we're so zoomed out, but it's located where there's a driveway connecting the northwest side of Atlantic Broadband, so these 10 or so parking spaces and the entire northwest corner of the building will be behind the gate. And the reason for the gate here and not here is because this portion of the building, we anticipate to be part of the maintenance and use of Waterford Central. So office spaces, there's a single bay garage here. So we foresee that being used as part of the development and then the south, I guess, would be the easterly commercial bay will remain as offices and that will still have access to this existing park area and the driveways.
Okay. Do, do any other commission members have any questions about that gate or that possibly the prohibition on, you know, pass-through traffic there, the blocking of that?
And I do have some visuals that showed a little better, at a little better detail and scale. So you can see where we put it.
Okay, it looks like there aren't any questions, so please keep going.
Okay. In addition to the garage parking, we have standard and accessible park, outdoor parking spaces interspersed throughout the development. In general, each double building area has been designed so that there's sufficient parking to serve that building as they're completed. So around each building are sufficient spaces for 1.5 per unit. That does include the garages, so as you go back, you'll see a mix of parking on all sides of the building with garage space interspersed. Trash collection will be at the back of the site near the Atlantic Broadband Building. So that is located all the way to the south side. There's a secondary trash collection as you come down at the end of this parking area here, so it's centrally located between Waterford Woods and Waterford Central. In terms of recreation space, we kept it very conservative just for compliance purposes, but there's a substantial area of outdoor recreation available to the residents. So all of the bright green dashed areas are how we delineated recreation to show compliance with your regs. So there's a small area by building G. There's a very large area behind buildings H and J. And we'll get into how these are configured as we get into the grading and landscaping. The rec area behind H and J will include two pickleball courts, which have their own parking area. As you go onto the south side of the central driveway behind building L, you get to another rec area, which will have pollinator gardens, organic gardens, walking spaces, and then a dog park to the south. And that total area complies with your regulations and has been purposely shown to follow grading so that they're all usable recreation areas, not just lines. I think that covers the overall plan, so I'll quickly go through the these are sheets three through four, five, six of your development plans, and they're really just a higher-scale resolution of the layout.
Good question, please, before you move away from the recreational part, this is Bert.
Absolutely.
Do you have any plans to put out picnic tables or grilling areas or things like that for outdoor use by the tenants?
Yes, absolutely, so similar to what we did for Waterford Woods, actually you can just so happen to see one here between, this is building D, which is nearly done, and building A. You'll see this area here, which is grills, tables, and amenities that are part of the plan. The intent is to have a very similar feel where there will be grills, stations, and tables that are easily accessible between the buildings, so they will land within these rec areas. So there's one here for these three buildings. There's a sizable recreation here, and so this is behind building H, where you'll see grills and tables that are accessible to the residents. And the real reason is there's space throughout the property is you want residents to be able to use them quickly when they want to make dinner without having to have a gathering far away from their unit. So they, we try to space them out, so they're close to the doors, close to the access points. But to answer your question, yes, there will be a number of grill areas and tables and chairs.
And that's bottled liquid propane or is that charcoal or what's? I'm just, you know, for fire safety and like, I'm curious to know what your plan is for that.
Sure, very good question. So every one of the outdoor units is connected to a metered natural gas on the building that's controlled by the owner. And there's timers on all of the grills. So when a resident wants to use them, they're able to turn it on, it turns itself off if they forget and walk away. There is no charcoal, there's no grills allowed on decks. So those are the girls allowed to be used by residents and they are secured to those residents and timed.
Very nice, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I have one question as well.
Yep, go ahead.
So you have the Waterford Woods next door, and that has the pool, and then Waterford Central is going to have pickleball. Will the residents of each complex be moving back and forth? Or how do you control the movement of people between the different amenities? Or not, you know, so they can't use them if you wanted it that way? What's that plan?
That's a great question, and I'll use this, this is the unified lot line revision plan. This is also going to be an easement plan that allows cross easements between the two developments. So in terms of Waterford Central, Waterford Central will have easements over the driveway and parking to make sure they have adequate and suitable access to this development. In terms of what each of these is allowed to do, there are common cross easements for both properties that allow residents from both to access all of the residential, I mean, sorry, not the residential, the recreational amenities. So these two pickleball courts are centrally located for a reason. All residents of Waterford Woods will be able to use those pickleball courts as well as the gardens, the pollinators, areas, trails. Similar, Waterford Central can come onto the Waterford Wood site, drive, walk, and use any of the amenities that are outdoor. That includes the clubhouse. The only thing that's restricted for residents are the buildings themselves and the doors, so there is not free and common access into the buildings, into the garages. That's really the only thing that is restricted.
And then just to follow up, and I know this is a little bit off topic, you know, with the pool being shared by both complexes, have you planned for parking? I mean, the pickleball court is, it's going to be constrained by who's using it, and that's, I'm sure, what, eight people at a time?
Yep.
But if you now have 200 extra people that want to go to the pool, is that, has that been accounted for?
It will, it's accounted for in two ways. One, we did at the recommendation of town staff, connect our pedestrian sidewalks from Waterford Central directly to the sidewalks for Waterford Woods. So you'll see a connection at the front to allow residents to get to the sidewalk along the street and a connection in the center, which also connects all the way out back. And again, this was added, this sidewalk here at the recommendation, I think of the commission in 2022. So pedestrians will have full access throughout the site. So the only true and technical need for parking would be an accessible entrance and accessible parking. Most of the sidewalks in the site were designed to be accessible, some slightly exceed accessibility where they're just roads. So this area here is a little bit too steep. So there are handicapped parking spaces that are available to people that visit the clubhouse. In terms of the number of parking spaces, we're confident we have plenty of parking spaces to serve the development. In terms of unified parking, I don't want to zoom in because I'm afraid I'm gonna lock up again, but we have 325 parking spaces for the new development, which exceeds the minimum required. And your regulations have 1.5 spaces for both one and two bedroom units. I don't know the exact quantity, but I believe we have 144. We have about 261 bedroom units. So there will be spaces that don't have one and a half average. We will have plenty of parking on this site for our residents, and there will be, so we put all these spaces in here, immediately adjacent to the clubhouse to allow people to drive there. There may be some residents parked there, but likely there will be vacant spaces available for our residents at all times. And the other thing I'll say is that there's no outside residents allowed into the amenities. People can sign up a guest for a certain period of time, but this is not a place that will host gatherings for outside parties or allow people to come onsite and park, everything's locked and key fobbed.
Okay, and then just to follow up, the trash area right there by the pickleball courts? Are you anticipating that that will be utilized by both complexes or is that just for? I'm just wondering if that will have extra pickups, you know, if you're anticipating that complexes will be using it or just the one complex?
It'll be available for use to both, but I will say that Waterford Woods was designed with adequate trash collection. So there's one in the northwest corner here. As you make your way out back, there's, there's one for the residents that are building E and F for Waterford Woods. This is the main recycling area here, trash and recycling, and then there's one more satellite added. The reason it's here is we originally had it up here, right between buildings G and I. And at the recommendation of staff, we moved that as far away from the residences and My Rock Avenue and the road as possible. So it was here, which allowed a truck to get in and leave a little more centrally located. But we moved it back here, we thought it was a great spot, it's really not an occupied area by the residents, it can't be seen by neighbors. And it is centrally located, so people can share use of any of the trash recycling areas.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have a follow-up question about the shared amenities. So you mentioned that there'd be easements between the two properties, have, have those already been drafted?
They have, they have not been filed or finalized, but the language itself has been drafted with the owner. And since it is a common so the applicant and this application is also a member of the incorporation that is building and owning Waterford Woods, they're able to do those easements relatively effectively and efficiently. So they have been drafted. And I believe it's one of the conditions or recommendations of staff that those easements be provided to town staff for review prior to filing, and we fully agree with that.
Okay, that satisfies me then, because I was trying to think back and I couldn't remember when we approved the 394 Willets Avenue project, if we had specifically approved the amenities as being shared with the future development. And obviously you're presenting that for the current application, but I think having, having those easements actually recorded would solve the concern that I, that I have, so.
I agree, and we will, we will be doing that.
Okay.
Okay.
One last question.
Yes, sir. Yes, go ahead.
Are you, so it sounds like you've got plenty of parking, but I'm very curious to know, are you assigning parking spaces for residents?
No, there's sufficient parking and you know, in our experiences, there's a couple other developments I've been involved in. And usually there's a lot of empty parking spaces, even at one and a half average. And residents have a way of assigning their spaces to themselves, there are certain periods of time every day. We are habitual and ritual creatures. So a lot of people park in the same exact spot when they come home and they get there at the same time, and it's usually there's space, but no, there's no formal assignment of parking spaces.
Okay, and what's, what is the snow removal plan?
The snow removal plan here is we left a lot of space adjacent to all of the parking lots, so you'll see we did break up long expanses of parking with Central Islands, but we do provide sufficient room for a Uh, we did break up long expanses of parking with central islands, but we do provide sufficient room for a plow. Uh, to bring the snow to areas adjacent to and off of the parking area. And those areas all drain to areas where it will be collected and treated, so. Uh, we we tried to leave a lot of very big islands, um, in in large turning radius so that the the trucks can push. Uh, and find areas to store it without it impeding on parking or being stored on parking, um. And uh, just just for the record, I I was a director of public works for two and a half years, so uh. Blowing snow is near and dear, and um, I always think about where we're gonna put snow and and where cars are gonna be, so. We left those storage areas, not just behind parked cars, but also uh, on the islands adjacent to parked cars.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we covered a lot of the layout, um, so I won't spend a lot of time on on these detailed plans, um. Don't, excuse me. Alright, the one thing I will point out on uh, this this detailed sheet, we'll get into more detail is. Um, the frontage buffer berm, you can see right along Willet's Avenue extension. Uh, that berm will be an elevated berm, you'll see in the grading plan, uh, three to four feet above existing grade. Uh, and on the, so three to four feet above the new sidewalk that we're installing here, so there'll be a new sidewalk along Willet's Avenue with the grass shoulder. Uh, there'll be a grass maintained space with landscaping, uh, cross block fence, and then on the other side of that fence will be this berm which will be. Uh, a mix of screening and understory understory trees that'll create. Uh, a nice looking visual buffer so that folks on Willet's Avenue. Uh, can't look into the units themselves and vice versa. Uh, as cars come over the crest of My Rock, the lights won't shine towards Building G. And then the residents uh, really won't be looking at traffic or the commercial buildings across the street, other than once in the those in the third story. Um, and as we wrap around that that. Raid screening continues, and these are called understory enhancements or screening enhancements uh, to the east. Here, uh, and that parallels the residence on My Rock Avenue, so we're we're continuing that screening. And under understory advancement all the way down the east side of the. Development, uh, we'll get into that landscaping, but I do, it does show up nicely on on these layout plans as we work our way south. You can see that enhance the screening enhancement and understory enhancement continues along the properties. Um, this plan is intended for these two buildings, you can see the parking, the garages. And then everything on the west side is intended to kind of uh. Uh, blend in with Waterford words in terms of its appearance and landscaping. And then we move down, Atlantic Broadband is here. And you can see that screening and understory enhancement continues all the way. To what was likely a buffer that was installed as part of Atlantic Broadband, so that. Would be right here, so this is an existing very dense. Uh, I don't know if they're arbor body, but they are evergreen, uh, they're probably thirty feet tall by now and they create a very good buffer. We're trying to take that buffer and really extend it uh, to minimize the visual impact on any neighbors. Uh, I believe that covers it. And we make our way down, and as I said before, I do have some graphics that better show. Uh, the emergency access gate and knocks box, so you can see here. This is the existing Atlantic Broadband building, everything in gray is the existing driveway and parking. Uh, we are putting a fence and gate to prohibit any access into this area here. Uh, so that gate will be locked, and again, it will have a knocks box that's controlled by your public safety. Uh, departments and fire departments. Um, so this parking area here and driveway will only be accessible from the Waterford Central Development, and that includes. Uh, the building uh, office spaces that exist within that northwest corner. And the the southeast corner will be accessible from the parking lot and driveway, so. This graphic here shows that the only part that's still gonna be connected to this driveway in My Rock Avenue will be a portion. Of what formerly was connected. Uh, so there'll be a reduction of traffic accessing My Rock Avenue if this building were to be full, which it hasn't been in quite some time. I'm gonna move on to the grading and drainage, this will be high level, but any more questions on the site layout before we move on?
Anybody have any questions?
Good.
Yeah, uh, go ahead.
Alright, so uh, there's a lot of lines and a lot of colors in these plans, uh, but really the intent here. These are, these are the same plans that were submitted as a show. Adequate utilities exist for the development, um, so what you have here in red are always electric, blue is water. Teal is drainage and yellow is gas and green is sewer. Um, so we have all the necessary utilities for this development. Uh, I won't stay on this page too long, other than to show that we are coming off of the water main that was brought onto the site. Uh, for Waterford Woods and creating. Uh, a T and serving our development off of that existing private eight inch main. So that we know work within Willet's Avenue Extension based on our uh, work with the Utility Commission to date. Uh, every building will be served by water, sewer, gas and electric from these utilities. And in terms of drainage, not a lot going on on this north side, other than collection. And getting things into our treatment system as fast as possible. Um, and when I get to the next pages, I'll kind of explain how we uh, went through this, but. Uh, we we really designed the site to be created onto tiers, so we have um, cut slopes and fill slopes. And we have tiers and we disconnected all of our buildings as much as possible to minimize um, runoff. So we really tried to create spaces and tiers where water can uh, collect, be in long vegetated swales, infiltrate. And and get treated before it even gets to our formal treatment system, so you can see. This is that berm here with a cut slope down to the building pad. Stays flat across the road, and then there's a fill slope down to another tier. And you'll see that continue throughout the site, so cut slope along the east to a flatter pad. Fill slope down to a tier, fill cut slope down to a tier. So that uh. Oh, we got the spinning wheel of death again. There we go. So as we work our way to the south, uh, we get to the center of the site with our driveway here. Uh, again, water main will loop back to that private main to create a loop. Uh, all of our sewer will connect down to the existing sewer that was installed for Waterford Woods, so then that sewer goes directly into. The transmission main down by the railroad, so it's all by gravity. Um, gas will continue through the site, same with electric, and again, you see the cut slope along the easterly border. A flat slope for the buildings. This is our recreation tier, which is all accessible. Uh, then we have a cut and fill slope down to our pickleball court tier. And in between each of these are cutoff swales that you see in magenta. So all of those are swales that collect the water, create long vegetated areas for for limp pre-treatment. Uh, we did not account for any of that treatment in our design, so we were very conservative. And all of that brings everything down to our main. Detention and treatment area, and I think the next sheet shows that the best, so I'll go to that one. So this is our, again, this is the south end of the site. Same grading tiers, same utilities. And I'll spend a few minutes on our treatment and attenuation system, so. All of the rain gardens, all of the swales were not counted for treatment, they will provide treatment. Uh, what we provided is one main, uh, what we call a sediment for bay and gra- gravel wetland cell. This cell uh, treats and attenuates. Uh, the water quality volume and the water quality flow, so we fully retain the water quality volume within this treatment area. And that's before it even gets to the pond. The water that gets to this pond. Uh, the intent here is to have an an actual open water body that has a depth of five to six feet all the time. Uh, above that static elevation, we have sufficient capacity to attenuate our storm water and hold the volume, so. After treatment, it goes into this clean water pond, it will have recycling uh, in it in terms of air raiders and sprayers. Uh, water can build up before it discharges out here, so this system here fully attenuates and fully treats. Uh, the entire development, and again, that does not account for all the other features we incorporated. Um, I mean, for the record, I will say that we uh, we fully treat the water quality volume, the water quality flow. And we do not, we have a zero net increase in any uh, discharge for the two through the hundred year storm event. Um, that's it for the grading drainage utilities, any questions on those?
Does anybody have any questions? Uh, it's like you're good to keep moving on.
Alright, so this is a excess sheet. I will briefly talk, these erosion erosion and sedimentation controls, uh, this plan complies with the two thousand two. Uh, sedimentation erosion control manual, as well as your local regulations. Uh, the main purpose here is to show, you know, we we really thought out the phasing and the construction access for this to minimize impact to. Towns Road as well as impact onto Waterford Woods, so. Uh, you'll see we do have a construction access drive that will connect directly to Willet's Avenue. Is this construction access is located as far away from My Rock Avenue as possible, and that's mainly for sightline purposes. And this will be the main service for this internal root network of construction access roads. Until the the balance of the rough site work is complete. So the the intent is not to drive any large uh, trucks through the development itself that might carry soil. Uh, or other materials for construction. Um, the the one part about uh, construction with the building department and your fire marshal. Is uh, we have to pave and have utilities installed and charged mainly water before you can start to erect framing on a site, so. Uh, in this case, these construction access driveways, all of the massive site work will be done. Uh, the utilities will be in, and we will pave most of them um, before you're even seeing framing. Uh, so what that does is it allows for a much cleaner site, so we have construction access over paved roads. Uh, we have paved parking areas. Uh, we have drainage in place, we have proper swales in place before we're even putting up framing, so. Uh, it does lead to a a more manageable site, it minimizes erosion sedimentation control off the site, so we don't have as much tracking. But we will maintain these anti-tracking aprons for the duration. Um, all of the construction stormwater ends up coming down, as you see these existing contours bring water from northeast to southwest. They'll be collected in a series of silt traps. Uh, those silt traps will be separated from the clean water pond, and so everything will be held as long as possible during construction. Uh, for the area that will be open. And the last thing I'll point out, and the last sheet again, um, what we added to the erosion control plan. Was this will be a temporary fence, so that temporary fence will be installed before we have the locked gate. And that will prohibit construction traffic from using My Rock Avenue, um, so they can't enter or exit our site onto the driveway that serves My Rock Avenue. Um, and that will be in place until the permanent gate is installed, and so we still have an anti-tracking apron cuz there will be a connection onto a paved surface. Uh, but the really, the only purpose of that anti-tracking apron is to minimize tracking on the existing driveway, not. To minimize tracking onto My Rock Avenue. Um, so that is a. Again, it complies with the two thousand two E and S manual, and um. What I'll do is I'll just go right into, this is. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna do the landscaping first. Um. And then I will turn it over.
Before you go.
Yeah.
Um, this is Bert, um. There was some discussion during Waterford Woods construction. Um, and some very upset people on My Rock Avenue. Who claimed in some cases that they their pools were filling with dust and, well. Let's just say airborne particulates from the construction, I would like to know. How you're going to mitigate, since you're going to now be literally in their backyards as opposed to several acres away.
Hmm.
How are you going to control for the dust that's going to be generated here, which will only get be worse? If it's not carefully addressed.
Yeah, um, I I was at the meeting and I I heard those complaints loud and clear, um. And so we we went into the details of this plan. And how to control dust, so of course you can spray it with water, but we had a horrible summer last year, and uh, really there was no water resources to use. Um, so the other uh, the other things we have available to us are creating vegetative covers, so. What I did is I I went into the details and the notes of the actual narrative. And and put in timelines for how long soil can be exposed before it has to be seeded, uh, and that will be like a ride, a quick growth ride. Um, so we have designated top soil stockpile areas. Here and here. Those stockpile areas are intended to be, uh, they can be there a long time. And so they're they're situated as far away from My Rock Avenue as possible. Um, and they will be there a long time, so we're requiring them to be vegetated. Most of that dust came off of, from what I saw from being on the site. Uh, the stockpiles and the very dry upper surface of those stockpiles blowing off. Um, and we tried to control that, and so in this case, we're gonna seed them and vegetate them. Um, the access drives themselves, again, they'll be paved as soon as possible, those driveways. Um, re respond best to water or calcium chloride, and those requirements are also in in our notes that. Uh, the construction access driveway will need to be, uh, dust will need to be controlled or vehicles are going back and forth and and getting that wheel dust coming off the back of the truck. Uh, so water and calcium chloride will be incorporated on our construction access drive. And exposed soil stockpiles will be vegetated. Um, that is uh, what we do, and that, and then I will say this, there will be a D E E P construction stormwater permit for the site. Um, and and we are beefing up the requirements of uh, the construction monitoring to make sure. That these uh, elements are incorporated. Um, cuz the last thing we wanna do is hear complaints from My Rock Avenue in a public forum, so. Uh, we did hear them, we incorporated everything we could, and bottom line, uh, we will continue to monitor it. Um, and I'll work closely with Maureen Fitzgerald. Uh, she does visit the site quite frequently and uh, and will make sure it's as clean as possible.
Thank you.
I have a quick follow up to that, this is Tim. Will you be processing materials on the site such as screening loom or crushing rock?
Um, so the only materials that will be processed, so there there will be some um, blasting. Not much, we dug a lot of test holes. And most of the grading was done to honor where rock was, so we tried to stay above rock. Uh, and get into the gravelly material that's above it, uh, but there may be some blasting up here. And the strange thing about this site, and maybe it's why it was quarried, is there's these whales that come out of nowhere when they're digging. Um, I don't know if they're huge boulders or what, but occasionally you'll hit uh, an outcropping that was not expected and you have to blast it. That material will be crushed and reused onsite to avoid shipping out offsite. Uh, the main, the bulk of our processing will be the landfill material that was brought onto the site back in the thirties, forties and fifties and sixties. Um, so getting to this plan, that material, as I said before. Basically goes from the west edge of the Atlantic Broadband Building. Uh, through building, the center of building L, so the uh, I guess would be the west half of building L has some. To bring in it, and then it comes down. Um, basically to right about here. So this area here is is that construction and demolition debris. Um, any material within the pond or under this building will be removed. Screened to remove any metal, uh, and any wood, that metal and wood will be shipped offsite and landfilled. And then the concrete masonry and brick will be processed and reused as clean fill. So that's the, that's the bulk of the processing and all of that will occur down here.
Yeah, thank you.
Alright, um. So back to landscaping, I touched on the screening before, um, so again, the northern and eastern property lines will be fully screened and buffered. Uh, at least twenty five feet wide. In addition to that, you can see the cut slope with that berm. So all of these buildings will be set between ten and fifteen feet below. Um, existing grade so that, you know, the the buildings won't be well above uh, existing topography, that should be set into topography. Um, and then what you see, what you see in kind of the lime green. Are are all the naturalized areas, so all of the tiers, the slopes between our tiers or terraces are going to be. Uh, more of a fescue no mow, um. Separation, so there'll be non-maintenance areas between every maintenance maintained area, so. In the darker green with the dots, that's mowed lawn, maintained around the buildings as as little as possible. And everywhere there's a transition between tiers will be that fescue, long grass and no mow which. And everywhere there's a transition between tiers will be that fescue, long grass and no mow, which. We won't really have to mow more than once a year, maybe every other. That transitions down to again a maintained. Terrace for recreation purposes. And then any cut and fill slopes between that again will be that natural no mow and fescue down to. Here and in between all of those are those swales we discussed where water that comes down the slope will be picked up. And to extend our time of concentration and treatment. So you you kind of see that same pattern continuing throughout the site. Is there's all of the maintained areas are always surrounded by areas that are not maintained very often. And will have a much more taller vegetation, a thicker vegetation and a native vegetation between them. So again, that continues throughout. In terms of our formal landscaping, it's mainly a continuation of what you see on Waterford Woods today. Incorporating a lot of shade and street trees along the driveway corridor. With foundation plantings intermixed and then screening around the perimeter, so. This is a little different, in this case, there are zero mature trees on our property, so of the development pad. Way over in the right corner here is the existing wood line. Between the wood line and Willet's Avenue, there's not a single mature tree that would be of substance, most of it is scrub vegetation and invasive species, so. What we're doing is bringing on the native shade trees and and screening trees, so. All the central trees you see here are sugar maples, red maples, pin oaks. Florida dogwoods and plum trees, all of them native and on the Connecticut native tree list. We are bringing sixty shade trees onto the site that don't currently exist, so sixty shade trees. I believe there's a hundred and forty. Screening trees around the perimeter. And that's not counting the flowering trees and and foundation planting, so over two hundred trees will be brought on the site. Knowing the developer that'll likely be on the low end of what they actually put in, because you can see here the amount of trees they. Wanted to bring on that site to really give it a natural feel and bring back. The separation of the buildings from the road, so. Continuing that process, adding in. Natural amenities, pollinator garden here, which will be all planted with wildflowers and. So really just trying to bring back. The natural feel of the land since it was first disturbed forty or fifty years ago.
I have one question, Tim.
Go ahead.
This is Karen. Around the pond, what's the vegetation like? I'm just concerned that with the dog park right there that people might try to. They're not going to try and walk the dogs around the pond, are they?
That's not the intent, so the dog park itself will be fenced in, so what you see in yellow will be fenced. So it's not like a, I guess, a freewheeling dog park. From the dark area here will be the. Maintained lawn around the dog park. Then we have a slope down. To basically what would be a shelf that is at the waterline, that shelf will be planted with. Wetland plugs. That survive just above the waterline and just above the waterline, and that's to create a more natural habitat within the actual stagnant or. What the typical water elevation, so. The separation really will be the slope, sorry. Don't reel too fast. The separation itself will be the three to one slopes that lead down to that shelf. And the grass and plantings that will have on that shelf to discourage that. But right now, there's no intent to allow people to walk down to the water, it's really just there for visual purposes.
Okay, I just wanted to check because I have interesting dog friends who would just let their dog go in there, but if you've got a slope that would pro, you know. Prohibit that, then that should be hopefully enough. Will there be any signage that is, you know, not for swimming, not for animals? That sort of thing?
You know, it's a really good suggestion, we haven't, we haven't thought about. What to put there, but we certainly can incorporate signage. Similar to what we added for the gardens and the pollinators, so the pollinator gardens, we added signage to let people know that it is a habitat. And we're trying to attract these, so you know, it's a good thing, but we we certainly can add. Signage at the pond that the intent here is to to have an environmentally conscious pond that has. Native vegetation and. You know, I have a hundred pound dog and he surely would like to go swimming, so. I I think keeping him out of it is a good idea.
Thank you.
Anybody else have a question at this point?
All right.
Sorry. Can I just ask, there's not going to be any fishing in that pond?
Fishing or fish?
Fish, well, both. But they probably won't start with them, but you could certainly put them in.
Well, you know, the the eggs might come in on the bird's feet, which would be fine, you know, we're hopeful that there is wildlife that. Establishes in it and we keep a clean pool of water. It certainly would, you know, if we get the vegetation and we keep the water clean and it stays deep enough, we're hopeful there will be. Some fish and some amphibians that do make it a habit to go there. I don't know that we need to know fishing sign, I don't think anything will get big enough for that, but. You know, if it does, if it does, like, you know, we'll cross that bridge, but that'll be yours down the road.
I've been told there's some pretty good fish in in a small pond on the golf course. It's only a couple miles away.
That's interesting. It it's surprising where fish can can survive.
Agreed.
All right. Anybody else have a question? All right, go ahead.
No, it's, I'm gonna hand it over to John Wicco. He can briefly go through the architectures, I will say this, it's. Really a repeat of building E and F that was already approved, so we're using that model for all six buildings here. And the garages are also similar, but John, take it away. Did we lose John? Oh, John, you're muted.
Okay, now thanks for the reminder. John Wicco offices at fifty eight Prospect Street in Milford, Connecticut. As Brandon said, it's a repeat of buildings stylistically that are E and F. That matched the other A, B, C. And D. We have six buildings of thirty six units each. Overall size is one ninety by seventy six outside cornered outside quarters. There's three floors per building that. Occupy those terraces that Brandon provided. So we have access front and back from the ground floor. And second and third have terraces on many of the units. The building is thirty one thousand. One hundred or seven hundred and fifteen square feet. The height of the building to the maximum ridge is forty feet. I'm sorry, the maximum highest. Gable is forty feet. And the the main. Larger roof that you can see in the the asphalt chingle rendered. That's thirty five foot to the midpoint of that that roof. So certainly not huge and will take advantage of that that slope as the. The site is terraced. The interior is composed of. Three access stairs that serve four units per floor. They're they're open stairs with panels and louvers at this point. All of our handicap units are on the first floor, which have access throughout the site. Or from the site that's fully accessible. And we take care of all our requirements there. One nice feature with our, with these buildings, we have some mechanical. Units are located on the roofs in the in a recessed area. Of the stairs, those the three stair towers. Will have the little condensing units for the mini splits. And then there are some corner units that have. Magic pack type of unit which is self-contained. So we don't have any. Mechanical units out on grade and to to clutter the landscape. The the style we got. The approval from the design review. And we're keeping the the same materials. Which consists of a. Hardy siding, which is this kind of a cement board, very durable, lasts long. We have flat panels designs within the elevations, we have poured button. And ship lap all mixed to. Provide. Interest in the elevations and accentuate different features. The other signs we're using are corrugated metal. Vinyl clapboard and various panels and openings at the at the stair towers. Railing systems are vinyl. We also have. Screens around the. Utility meters. Which make for a nice looking building, no matter what angle or or what approach you're coming from. Asphalt roofs, chingles, I think I mentioned, and those are the the six buildings. We also have the garages. Which Brandon talked about scattered throughout, providing some private storage space for the cars. To note. Garage G four hundred E, we're changing to a more stylistic. Facade and and structure with multi roof flying scupolas. At the pickleball area, which is kind of out in the open and and. Highly visible, so we we did change that from the from the footprint that Brandon has on his site plan. That's a five bay garage with. The open canopy that that overlooks the the water. A stopping place for for pedestrians. The other garages, there's two different types, there's the ten bay, which has an agricultural. Style to the building. A low pitch gable with some barn sashes. Overhead doors with decorative hardware. And. One end towards the opposite the road has individual storage shed. Units, so there's those that the G five hundred and six hundred. Are the ten bay and then the the G seven hundred and eight hundred, if you're. If you're following along on the site plan, those are the. The the five bay which have similar features, the vinyl siding. Vertical board and matton. For architectural accents. That's a quick version, I can answer any questions or go into further detail if you would like me to.
Does anyone have any questions at this point?
One quick question, this is Bert. You you mentioned handicap accessible apartments. Do you have affordable apartments as well in this?
I'm not sure what the. The developer owner has planned for that, so it doesn't really pertain to the architecture. But more in terms of how they they rent and and the the fees that are related to them. So I I wouldn't be able to answer that question.
Okay.
I I can say in preliminary discussions, I think it came up at the zone change as well. A desire for affordability in this phase, I think phase one had nine units. Phase two did not have affordability and this one was a goal of getting towards ten percent. So eighteen of the units can be earmarked as eighty percent affordable.
Thank you, Brandon.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Okay, you guys can keep going.
All right, and I think the last but not least is Joe Balskus with VHB for traffic. And I'll let Joe take it from here.
Thanks, Brandon, can you hear me okay?
Yep.
Good evening again, Joe Balskus, licensed professional engineer, state of Connecticut. Traffic engineer for the traffic study that was submitted by VHB. We obviously did this traffic study as well as the previous traffic studies for the previous phases and approvals, including the town approvals. And the Office State Traffic Administration approvals. So I'll give a quick overview of the study that that we that we prepared and submitted you had in front of you. It's a typical traffic study, you've seen it before, we've expanded a little bit in terms of the intersection, in terms of improvements, but we'll talk about that in a minute. But we we built, we built upon the previous efforts that we've done, we've updated our traffic counts, updated our crash data. Did some observations out there, we know of the queuing issue that's on on the Willet's Avenue side. And we basically developed a new traffic impact study. We also know that DOT has installed new signal at the intersection, if you've been out there, you know DOT's installed new signal there. It's operational, so we've included that that new signal timing and operation in. In our traffic study efforts. Now with the trap accounts, we've done during the peak hour, the counts were done. Back in October, in the report, it shows in October last year. It was a typical October day, no adverse conditions. And no holidays. It was October twenty second, October twelfth. Last year, we counted the seven to ten o'clock in the mornings as well as three to six in the afternoon. And found a peak hour is seven thirty, eight thirty in the morning and then three o'clock to four o'clock in the afternoon, a little earlier than than we usually find. And those counts were done at the intersection of Route one and Willet's Avenue, and that that Will Street, that 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 intersection was chosen because. We know there's been concerns during the past, we've we've obviously observed that as well and. And the traffic volume, the generation itself, not not a lot of traffic being generated, I'll talk about that in a minute, but. You know, a good portion of it is going through this intersection, so that's why we look at that intersection as our study area. As well as our site drive as our two study area intersections. So we then looked at the the trip generation for the project using IT, you've heard that name before, the Institute of Traffic Engineers. Trip Generation Manual, we've been using that, that's a state required manual for trip generation. Looked at that generation. For the the two hundred units of housing being developed. It's about a hundred trips in the ninety to morning peak hour, a hundred thirteen afternoon peak hour. We took those trips and we split them up based upon existing conditions, based upon where we know the population is is going in terms of work. commute to work. And about fifty percent going to the to the east, the rest were going to. Willet's, Willet's to to Boston Post Road and points east. As well as points south. And what we saw doing that, as we saw in phase two, if you recall, we were having some queuing. And and without doing improvements in the intersection. As you you may have experienced, we've seen the potential for the the backups on Willet's to extend, Willet's Avenue to extend. To the site drive, and so we were aware of that, we spent a lot of time at this intersection. With evaluating ways we can we can mitigate those those backups, those queues. We looked, we looked at re-timing, we talked to DOT about it as well, we had an informal submission to DOT. And we looked at how we could accommodate. The 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 traffic from the additional units. And is there a timing way we could do it? And DOT basically did, looked at what we submitted and. I guess informally and said, well, you know what, you're probably not able to make it work with the timing. We have a new signal out there, it's part of our overall signal system. So we went back to the drawdown board and said, well, you know what, let's pull the old concept that we had. Which involve widening Willet's Avenue. To two lanes as you as you see here. And we did that because the queue projections were showing it was going to back up to the drive through our site driveway. So that's a good, that's a good, that's a good distance, obviously four hundred feet or so to to the driveway. And so we looked at how can we do this, and what we have in front of you is a concept plan. That that we've developed. We we looked at ways to widen Willet's Avenue. To provide a a second lane, so we have a exclusive left turn lane. And then a left and through lane. Even though they're kind of skewed, they're kind of straight, but in terms of designation, that's how we're, that's how we're designating them, and then obviously one lane departing going. Going eastbound, so we're able to look at the the right of way. In this area and able to develop a cross section with our three lanes. Relocate the sidewalk in a couple spots. And within the right of way and allow us to provide those two lanes now approaching Boston Post Road. Route one and allow us to store more traffic in there and to to address the existing queuing, so what does that mean? In terms of analysis, so we did our capacity analysis and there's a table four in a report as you as you may have seen. And by doing this, and I should note, this is just the afternoon peak hour, we don't have no shoes. Midday, we have no issues in the morning peak, it's really just a small window, if you will, in the afternoon peak hour, those those hour or so in the afternoon. When the shift releases on your boat can coincide with some school traffic and obviously the pandemic level traffic now in terms of. Of peak hours kind of changing a little bit. We it's it's an afternoon peak hour, so it's not all day, it's not in the morning. We it's it's an afternoon peak hour, so it's not all day, it's not in the morning, lunchtime, it's not the weekend, it's really just the weekday afternoon peak hour. And so the widening that we have proposed there allows us to really mitigate. The queuing to the point where we drop it down to where in a in a no bill condition, it was going upwards of four hundred fifty to five hundred feet in length. With a single lane. And projected that we now be basically cut in half, so we're now to a two hundred and ten feet. As a queue, and this the widening is for three hundred feet, so we're we're proposing to widen the road. Willett Avenue for three hundred feet from the stop bar. More than we need to, but we figured we have some reserve capacity there for the future. And that allows us to improve. The level service at the intersection from level service C projected and build condition next year. To level service B at the same time, so. Obviously, the the widening is very beneficial for the existing condition that's been out there for a while, some backups. Adding the travel and development. Adding some growth, we allow for one percent growth. In the area roadways, and that allows us to do the analysis and show that we we can obviously help the intersection immensely. Level source C isn't terrible, it's actually pretty good level service, but we actually improve upon that, at the same time reducing the queuing. On on the approach, so. With that said, we're able to obviously mitigate the existing condition. Mitigate the additional traffic from this, you know, the ninety cars in the morning, a hundred thirteen cars in the afternoon. You know, you have forty percent, fifty percent going going east, fifty percent going west. So you're talking half that volume, not a lot of volume, you know, it's maybe a one or two cars a minute. But doing the widening does help the situation with regards to the queuing on that approach, and by doing that, it provides good level service, allows us to. Make an improvement and, you know, not have a significant impact to the. Site driveway as well as the Willett Avenue intersection with one for for the project itself, so with that, I include that part of presentation, I do want to talk about a couple things. We we did submit to OSTA. You know that OSTA approval comes after town approval, we did submit to OSTA for major traffic generator application. We have OSTA proof for the previous phases, we have that that that's an administrative decision, that's been approved, that's our under construction building. We submitted OSTA for this next part, next phase, it's a major traffic generator application, so a little different, but more involved. Because of proposing improvements. And the OSTA has accepted our volumes, so our volumes, projections, trip generation, distribution. Has been accepted and approved by by OSTA, we're now at step one, now we're on to step two. With a with a meeting with with them and talked about about the improvements here, so we've got OSTA approval of our step one. Distribution, volumes, growth, all that has been approved by by DOT, so that that's good news, that was expected. So we're moving forward in that. And I do want to touch upon real quick, the comments that we that we received today from SLR peer reviewer, and they had a few comments on some of this, I guess some initial comments. And they have some more comments coming, but they had they had about ten comments, it's like. I think one was redundant, maybe ten comments. And they they asked about some crash history that that was done from twenty twenty to twenty twenty two. A good comment, you know, is during the pandemic, there are some then some crash trends that could be a little different. We we did actually look at the crash trends before tonight and and three years before that, so. The report you have is twenty twenty, twenty twenty two, yeah, during the pandemic, and that that's true. We've actually seen some worsening of crash trends in a pandemic, as you've probably heard, we've seen some worsening that, but we use. Those three years, but looking back three years before that. We have basically, we had twelve crashes and the and the pandemic crash period in the report. And we had eleven crashes three years before that, so now now it's major change in the crash history. And we'll we'll reply to this, but I just wanted you to be be aware of that, that they identified three years during pandemic. Okay, look three years before that, we have, and there's really no change in in the crash trends. And there's a question regarding the the crashes themselves, we rerans. Eight of the twelve are rents that signalize intersection, that's what happens, exactly what happens in signalized intersections. Signals cause reran crashes, that that's a fact of traffic engineer, but six two thirds of that being reran is typical. There was a question regarding the these, looking at other intersections on Route one, unnecessary. Unnecessary, we'll apply to that, OSTA approved our trip our travel volumes, they approved our study area. So we'll we'll reply to that in affirmative, that is unnecessary. OSTA looks at a hundred trips, if you're adding a hundred trips to an intersection, that should be the study area, or adding less than a hundred trips to this intersection, but we felt it was necessary because of what we're seeing for congestion. And backup, so unnecessary to expand. The study area, there's a couple of comments regarding construction traffic, yeah, we could do that, if it's not. It's not really relevant or germane to this project impact, but we'll 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 address that. And during the workday, again, I'll OSTA approved our distribution, so they they know what we did from before this time. And so a lot of these comments from the peer viewer really are 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 moot, if you will, that OSTA has has approved them. So we will we'll we'll reply to those. And then there was a question regarding the improvements. The timeline for these improvements that you showed that were shown here, so. With 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 the schedule, here we are almost in June, we're expecting OSTA, obviously approval from the town, but OSTA approval. You know, with the pace we're going, could be could be this could be summer. And so the the signal itself, they were the the widening, that's something that is totally feasible for next year. So it's it's quite possible that the widening of this intersection can be done next construction season. And I don't know if that what it means in terms of a building COO is branding, but I I think that's a that's probably a a schedule that's in parallel with. Opening more units as part of this phase, so we with the current pace we're going. With step one being done, we we certainly anticipate that, there's no reason to to say that we can't be building this widening. Next construction season. And with that, I'll conclude my presentation, any questions you may have, we're in for OSTA, step one is done. I think the the I think it's approved for volume and distribution, study area. We'll respond to peer review comments, but the the widening does obviously help, it's been needed for a while, we talked about it in the past pages. Here we are with a big phase, and we're doing it, closing. Thank you.
Does anybody have questions about the traffic considerations?
Tim, I have a question, this is Karen.
Go ahead.
And this might actually be more for Mark and Jonathan. I understand the benefit of widening the road for the applicant. Have we heard anything from the current property owners that would be impacted by? The widening of the road and that they would be losing some of their property, has?
I can answer that, I'm sorry, there's no property, there's no property takes with this. With this proposed widening, this is within the right of way, so. We we are not proposing easements or taking property, and we can't do that, we can't do it, so this is entirely, this is a typical. Widening mitigation effort that we do on projects like this, where we widen within the available right of way. So no property, no driveways are being taken, no driveways are being changed. And no properties being acquired or or easements are required for this, this is within a DOT. Within the town, sorry, within the town and DOT ready to some extent, DOT ready in Route one, so there's no property takes.
What about sidewalks, would they be impacted?
Yeah, well, we are proposing to adjust the sidewalk, yeah, we are proposing to adjust sidewalks as a result, yes, we are not losing sidewalks, we're adjusting sidewalks.
So so they would have some landscaping and some other adaptations due to the new sidewalks in that one?
Again, the work is is entirely within the right of way itself, we're not proposing to do work on prior property.
Okay, thank you.
And let me be clear, this this may change a little bit, when when OSTA looks at this, they may have some tweaks to this, I mean, it's a. This is a town road, but it's a state highway that we're intersecting, so this may be tweaked a little more, you know, that that will be meeting with them, and town will be invited to that. The town's local traffic authority will be invited to that meeting as well. Well, we'll walk through this whole thing, we'll talk to DOT and OSTA about this, DOT is reviewing the application for OSTA. So, you know, it it's it's fair to say that there could be some changes to this, some tweaks to this, that that, you know, kind of modify it. For whatever reason, that that the DOT division of traffic may have made some comments on.
If I could add one thing to the our response, this is Brandon Handfield with the Anick River Consultants. Two things, one we did meet with the chief of police and and his head of traffic. On the proposed widening plan, and they agreed it would be an improvement and. The reconfiguration of the lanes as well as the the line marking would address their concerns for the left hand turn of two lanes. And the other thing we talked about, it came up. At the Waterford Woods meeting was the issue with the 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 tire retail center. Of those folks turning left and the issues they have of of traffic not letting them in. And sometimes when they are let in, it does cause a ripple effect of backup. Adding the second lane, we talked about will open up. Windows or gaps for those folks to turn left more freely than they currently do, so. You may see an improvement for those folks that are closest to the intersection of having more room. To exit their site and go left rather than go right and and all the way around the block, so. We did discuss that with the chief of police, and and the current concept does address their concerns and and that's why we're moving forward with it.
Does anyone else have a question?
Yeah, I would just like to make one comment here, relative Karen's. Karen's concerns of the properties. You know, we would, the town and our department will also take a look at the impacts of any of the existing site plans. So, for example, the convenience store right there at the corner, you know, if there's any if there's any widening, you know, that would impact. The entrance drives that were already approved by the commission years ago, we will certainly take a look at those impacts at that time.
So besides DOT or OSTA, are there? Additional town level approvals that will be required to approve the widening here?
I'm sorry.
No, no, go ahead.
I would say the the local traffic authority, the OSTA approval requires. The concurrence, or you see how the concurrence of the the local traffic authority as part of that process, as part of the OSTA process.
Okay, and. And and maybe the the process that's playing out would decide this, but who who would actually do the work of widening it and pay for that, is that this applicant that would be doing that?
Correct.
Yes.
Yeah, and 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 let me just, so let me explain a little further process, so. Let's say town approval, then OSTA approval comes sometime this summer, let's say. We then we need to file an encroaching permit with DOT, and I'm sure a town permit as well for the word in town right away, so there'd be. There'd be there was, those are construction related permits, so we will design improvements, we'll design the changes, any changes to the traffic signal timing. And now go to go to the DOT for an encroaching permit, I'm sure as well, a town a permit as well for construction of of the work in the town right away, as well as a DOT right away.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that, you know, I I think this is. Probably a good improvement to the road, and and we've hit this with other projects that we've encountered around town where. You know, the the changes to the roadway itself are outside of our our jurisdiction, but obviously the things that we approve have impacts on the traffic, so. You know, I I certainly appreciate, you know, the the thorough commentary that you guys have given us on the the widening of the road here. Any other questions on the traffic or expanding the roadway here?
Yeah, this is Bert.
Yeah, go ahead, Bert.
So kudos to you guys for this effort to. Put that double lane in. I think this is a win-win. For for the town, for for the traffic going through the town as well as as for the proposed. Properties, the the development. The question that I have, and maybe it's because I don't fully understand how the. Assessment, the traffic assessment was done here, but. I really worry with doubling up the two lanes of traffic. Coming from Willet's into Boston Post Road. I don't understand the signaling, but. If the double lane of traffic coming down Boston Post Road to, I guess, the west or north. Gets fills fills up the the. The part of Boston Post Road from this intersection up to the stop and shop light. Then one or two or ten lanes here don't actually accelerate anything, or vice versa, if you fill that space. With the traffic from Willet's. Depend, I I I guess it would be nice to know that. DOT has already synchronized to anticipate. The congestion that's likely to happen from two major arteries filling that space sequentially. Does that make sense?
Yeah, yeah, no, it does, it's a valid valid question, so, oh, oh, so the Office of State Traffic Administration. Their their directive is to protect the health and safety and welfare of travel public, so. They're gonna look at, they're gonna look at this project and this intersection. And and you know, the impact on this intersection and other intersections, okay, this this Route one, this Boston Post Road signal system. Is in a, I think, I think an eight signal system, they're all coordinated along along here. So they they will look at that in terms of what are you proposing here, are you proposing changes in here? That would affect that, and they obviously have them synchronized, so there's there's limited queuing along. Along Route one between intersections, they don't back up. I will tell you that what we're proposing to do here is not to change the timing. Of Boston Post Road. All right, we we tried to look at that, is that was that was there any reserve capacity? To give more green time to Willet's, I mean, you know, it's like a clock, you only have so much or pieces of pie. There's so much so many pieces of pie, you can distribute to Willet's and Boston Post Road, so we looked at trying to get a little more time from from Boston Post Road. And then they said, no, they don't want to do that, because they want to keep their signals synchronized all the same cycle. So with this improvement, we're not changing, proposing to change a synchronization. Of the signal, so they'll keep operating at good level service as they are today. So we're not reducing any time on Boston Post Road, we're not increasing any time, we're basically using the green time that's there today. Add another lane, so it simplifies, it simplifies the impact, if you will. To to the intersection, but and also remember that Boston Post Road to the east. Is ten thousand cars a day, Willet's Avenue to the east is ten thousand cars a day, so. You've got, you've got, you know, two roadways that are carrying ten thousand cars a day, intersecting at this at this intersection. And they're coordinated traffic signals, so that's gonna be OSTA's charge to look at. Is there anything beyond this, and I would tell you this. If they were concerned about that, they would have said, you need to expand your study area, they would have had us look at the stop and shut, other adjacent signals. They would have had us do that at step one, and they did not, they're satisfied with the traffic that we're that we're proposing to be generating here. Does not require further study at signals downstream and upstream of the intersection, so I hope that helps. With your.
It it does, thank you, and. I do think that this is going to be a very nice improvement for the town, especially when it's not the peak time, the peak time, I think, is going to be a challenge no matter what, but. I appreciate what you guys are doing, this is really great, in my opinion.
Thank you.
All right, we're we're happy to. I don't know if there's any more questions for us.
Sorry, I was frozen there for a minute, you guys can go ahead.
Okay, I I think we've covered the basics of the application and our proposal. I I a few, and then my computer's now frozen too, so we'll let that catch up as I as I close out, but. Today, we've gotten all the approvals we can up to this point, so the zone change occurred. In twenty twenty two to to make this a CMF zone. We've worked really hard to make this development fit in with what you've already approved, as well as the neighborhood. We went to the Conservation Commission and got a declaratory ruling that there's no regulated activity. As we stayed well over a hundred feet from the inland wetlands and watercourses that are to the south. We have a pretty hefty stormwater plan for treatment and attenuation. To address any concerns downstream in the Jordan Brook watershed. And we feel we've put together a good plan. And hope the commission agrees, and and we look forward to working with you more.
Thank you, does anybody, any members of the commission have? More questions at this point before we ask Mark to talk to us about his staff report? I'm not seeing any anyone unmuting, so. Mark, do you want to take over there?
I had, I had prepared a staff report and submitted it to. To the members of the commission for review, also the applicant and his representatives. Also received a copy of this staff report, so I think I think the findings are pretty straightforward on here. What I'd like to do though is to make sure that our, what I have listed here for modifications and conditions be put on the record here, so I just want to. Want to go through those, through that list. Unless anybody at this point has any questions. Unless anybody at this point has any questions on the findings or any other other part of the staff report.
Any questions? There's no bucket.
Okay, all right. So let me, let me start with a, go right into the conditions and modifications here. Condition number one was that an operation and maintenance manual inspection checklist because the stormwater system is so robust that this inspection checklist is submitted to the planning department at the time of that the final plans are filed. So that we have that on record as well. It's the manual shall identify the party responsible for the maintenance and inspection of the and repair of the system components and also to be responsible for submission of the annual maintenance report to the town as years go on. That's all in accordance with section 25.6 of the zoning regulations. Add a note to the final plans identifying that the stormwater treatment system is in compliance with section 25.6.10.14 of the Waterford zoning regulations. Based on the size of the total disturbed area of this project, there's a statement of fact really that that DEP construction stormwater permit is going to be required for this project. The Waterford Utility Commission would like to see their approved details added to the plans and those, those shall be added to the final plans prior to filing on the land records. Relative to the landfill on the property, the old, the old landfill that that a Connecticut licensed environmental professional certified LEP is going to be, shall be present to verify that any debris encountered during the excavation is disposed of properly. The stormwater detention basin system and the treatment system shall be completed and stabilized prior to the issuance of the certificate of zoning compliance for the first completed residential building. Subsequent certificates of zoning compliance for each remaining building will be issued upon inspection and verification by the design engineer if the stormwater basin and treatment system remains stabilized and continues to function as designed. That is to make sure that when the first certificate of zoning compliance and certificate of occupancy is issued for the first building, that the stormwater system is operational and that as subsequent construction goes on, because this project is being constructed in phases, that every, every other subsequent issuance of a permit is going to require that at least the system be re-inspected to verify that it, that it is, is continuing to function properly. Kind of, kind of puts a check and balance in there. Okay, so a planning schedule for the detention basin aquatic shelf shall be submitted to the planning department for review and approved prior to planning, planting, sorry. All easement documentation, proposed access easement for 61 My Rock Avenue to utilize a common access drive located at 394 Willets Avenue Extension as as is depicted on the site plan shall be provided and filed at the time of filing the final plans on the land records. What I'd like to do though is that there's also I would imagine will be utility easements and also cross reciprocal easements as well associated with those, with those. So not just an access season, but all of the utility and any cross reciprocal easements also be submitted prior to filing the final plans on the land records. And the last one is a, is what I had added today based on on our receipt of SLR's peer review of the traffic impact study. And that the traffic impact report be updated to incorporate any comments and recommendations from the peer review study performed by the town's traffic consultant prior to filing the final plans on the land records. So with that, there's also a motion. Does anybody have any questions on the conditions as, as I've, as I've read?
Anyone have questions?
Tim, I just have one quick question. I think Mark handled it, but you had mentioned something about the easements in your questioning of the applicant. Does his modification of the conditions address your easement issues?
Yeah, I think so because you know, what's written talks about the common access, but then also I think Mark was just mentioning the cross access, which I take to mean, you know, include those shared amenities and things like that. So that satisfies me.
I have one question for Mark, Tim.
Go ahead.
So I asked a question about affordable housing units and I thought I heard the number 18 was stated, does that need to be captured somewhere in this, either in the findings or somewhere in the motion or what?
I would, I would suggest that yes, that should be captured in the decision. So I think I have something, something positive from Brandon or the applicant as far as what that percentage is. Is it 18% as stated?
No, not 18%, 18 units. Sorry. Okay, I'd have to move to a different country. No, 18 units, which is slightly under 10%. It'll be 80% affordable.
Okay, yes. So we can add that, then we'll add that as a condition of approval.
So the condition 10, I guess, on that list?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Is there any further discussion or questions from commission members? Okay, if not, we can entertain a motion if anyone would like to make one.
Tim, I just have one quick question before we motion.
Yeah.
Some of the documents that came out today at, you know, 2 o'clock. I know some of it was addressed during the traffic survey. Do we need to include any information that would include accommodating the information we got today? Or have we already done that with this new draft? I guess this is a question for Mark.
Yeah, Ray, we've already done that as a condition 19. I mean, I'm sorry, it's condition nine. As long as it gets updated and incorporates any, any of the conditions or comments or recommendations from the peer review study.
Okay, I just want to make sure that everything, you know, that's new is also included. Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments or questions? Okay, would anyone like to make a motion?
I'll make that motion, Tim, if you like.
Sure.
I would move that we approve with modifications and conditions the Waterford Central Multifamily Development Site Plan Application Permit Number PL 23-9 for 61 and 61A My Rock Avenue with conditions 1 through 10 and adopt findings 1 through 10 of the staff report.
Okay, so that's moved by Bert. Is anybody, would anybody care to be a second on that?
I'll second that, Tim.
All right, 10 seconds that.
Is it? Sorry, too late to add one more question.
Sure.
With the shared driveway, are they updating all the signage and are they doing any kind of street names and things in the complex to be known?
I had. Happy to answer that if you'd like me to.
Go ahead.
In our plan set, there are directional signage that's shown. I believe on sheet two and then the details are provided on sheet, I'm going to guess 17. That will provide people entering the site, they'll know that what buildings are to the left are straight as they make their way around the site. So we are adding signage in addition to what was approved as Waterford Woods.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Tim.
No, that's all right. So we have a motion that's been seconded. Is there any discussion on it? Any further discussion? Okay, so I guess we can go ahead and vote. Mark, do we need to do this sort of like one person at a time or?
Yes, we should be doing roll.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote then.
Okay, so I can start with that. Okay, Bert?
Approve.
Aaron?
I.
Kim, Condorino?
Approve.
Kim Bleesdale?
Approve.
Doris?
Approve.
All right, so that's unanimous?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I just want to say thank you to the applicant. This looks like a good project and you know, I think I probably speak for everybody when I say, you know, we're looking forward to the the improvements to the intersection there. I think people in town will be excited about that.
Yeah, thank you very much and we look forward to it too.
Thank you.
Thanks. Yes, have a good night. Let's see, so we can move on to item number five. Administrative review. Do we have anything under that heading tonight?
We don't.
All right, and what about item number six correspondence? Do we have anything?
No, no correspondence.
Okay, moving right on to item number seven. Is there anything that you'd like to report to us on the, you know, past month's projects or ongoing projects?
No, no, not at this point. What I'd like to do though is to add the the members of, and this is, this is the commission's business here. The members of the design review board are appointed by the Planning and Zoning Commission. Two members' terms have expired on May 4th. And so they, they both, Jan Merrill, who's a member of the board, the design review board, and Bob Nye is also a member. Both of their terms expired on May 4th and they would like to be reappointed. So I would, what I would need to to, you know, they're, they're very excited about continuing to serve on the board. And so it would really, it's, it's really up to the commission to reappoint both Jan Merrill and Bob Nye need a motion and a vote on that.
Okay, is that something we can do tonight or do we have to publish that on agenda or anything like that?
We don't have to publish it on the agenda. We can add it on to the agenda if you'd like to under, under commission business and then act on it.
Okay. Is, would anyone like to make a motion regarding, was it Jan Morell and Bob Nye being reappointed to the design review board?
Need a motion?
Okay, I guess I'll go ahead and I'll make that motion then if no one else is itching to do that. Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second that motion. This is Bert.
Okay. Do we need to do a roll call vote again or just all in favor?
I.
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 Yeah, so all right, so with that added to the agenda now, we can have a motion to reappoint Jan Merrill and Bob Nye. This is a three-year, this is a three-year appointment.
Okay, would anyone like to make the motion for the three-year appointment of Jan Merrill and Bob Nye?
I'll make that motion to Bert.
And I'll second that. So I guess everybody in favor to say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone opposed? No one is opposed. Okay, so that takes us, oh, is there anything else under commission business there, Mark?
No, nothing there. Just we got our two public hearings coming up on June 4, on June 13th scheduled. Okay, and those will be live in-person meetings here at Town Hall.
And one of those was the is the development on Clark Lane, right?
That's correct.
And what's the other public hearing?
It's a regulation amendment to add hairdressing to a, as a customary home occupation.
Oh, okay.
Okay, the, just to make you aware, the Clark Lane, even though it's a site plan at the request of both the applicant and the chair, which, which you can do, you can hold a public hearing. On that, that's, that was, that was the intent.
Okay. Does anyone have questions about that? Okay, seeing none, we can move right on to item eight, adjournment. Is there a motion?
As Karen, I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Yeah, I'll second it.
Okay, moved in second, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Nope. All right. Well, have a good night, everybody.
You're very good.
Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good night.